Welcome to the Dade County Board of Commissioners as well as a joint session tonight with the Board of Commissioners of Trenton. We don't do this very often, but it does happen occasionally, so we're pleased to do this tonight. Tonight's agenda is a limited agenda. There's only two things on the agenda. One is to discuss the location and construction of an animal control facility. And the second item is to discuss an intergovernmental agreement for the purpose of maintenance and operation of a joint animal control facility. Bob Woods contacted me yesterday and asked me about saying a few words, initial, just initial thoughts. So I'm gonna turn that over right now to Bob if you want to go ahead.
No, glad to. First of all, thank you for coming tonight. Right? The thing about it is, this is a difficult mission and it's only with a whole lot of discussion, right? A whole lot of course and action analysis. That means where you gotta figure out what to do best, are we gonna be able to get it done? Bring up my slides, please. Next, next. All right, keep going. All right. Couple of things. The slides I'm gonna show you today reflect my personal, yes?
Need to stay close to a mic so everybody can see us and hear us or if you wanna carry one.
Well, I think they can hear me, that's for sure. But that's all right, I got it.
It's the online.
I got it.
Sorry.
All right, like I was saying, my personal thoughts and those of citizens that I asked on Facebook. I did it with the House Bill 581, I got a good response, and I did it with this and I got a response. All right, direct citizen, a couple of things talking about the concept itself. Bob, if we don't get what we voted for, then why should we vote? Because this happened a long time ago, let's just leave it at that. Okay? Oh yeah, this was voted on quite a while ago, what took so long? Well, the initial thing there is, there's forty-nine reasons why, but the thing about it is, we're addressing it now, so let's move on and make it happen. Okay? Citizen input, I think an animal shelter would be very beneficial for Dade County. Again, on the other side, I'm not in support because it's the taxpayer putting the bill, it's not fair, lots of people don't own a pet. I'm just sharing with you what some people say. Other folks have said, I've looked at budget reports for other animal shelters, you'd be surprised, the revenue that can be brought in. Now, the fourth one is just a summary, and I'll talk about it in more detail in a minute. There have been plenty of questions on how much is going to cost and how are we gonna pay for it? No doubt about it. Next chart, please. These are now personal things on my part. We have to go slow to go fast, meaning we have to do our homework, we have to think about this, we can't jump too fast, and I'm not one that beats projects down the road for a day or so, but we need to think about this thing, the whole breadth and width of what running this facility could mean. If you don't know where you're going, all roads will take you there. So we need specific goals of what we're trying to do with the building, the staffing of it, right? The standard operating procedures that we're gonna use, meaning how do we handle things on a routine, regular basis, so we're not reinventing the wheel with every single animal, right? And the methodology for financing it. From IFOXX, oh y'all, the building itself is the easy part, it's the staffing and operating it, that's the hard part. Next chart, please. We're doing a homework on this right now, okay? And, for example, a concern is identified, a vicious dog, a pack of dogs, I just talk in terms of dogs. The concern is captured, the concern is brought to the facility. Okay, then what are we gonna do next? We now have this dog that was a threat to the safety of our citizens, we bring it to this facility, what's the next step? We're working on that. Do we attempt to identify the owners, right? Do we spay and neuter the animal? How long do we want these animals in our facility? And what role should rescue centers and the like play in this overall operation? Next chart, please. All right, the elephant in the room, it's money, right? I hear two things time and time again. Yeah, Bobby, we need one, no doubt about it. The next question, comma, but how are we gonna pay for it? I mean, that comes in every single conversation, okay? So we gotta be, we have to be clear on the funding source we're using. It's not an isolated concern, I'm glad that we see it as a Trenton-Dade concern. And when ordinances are developed, they should not be the same for the city and the county, because the daily modus operandi in these areas are quite different from being in the city and being out in the country. And every group of animals is not hostile, we must be very much aware of this. Like in Piney, there's a little group that gets together every day, right, about eight o'clock in the morning, they just meet there, by some manner from heaven thing, they all get together, and they have a route they do all day long, they don't bother anybody, right? The neighborhood knows them, the neighborhood knows the names of the dogs, and it's a good thing, all right? Next chart, please. All right, Bob, so what's next? Following tonight, we're gonna have two representatives from the County Commission and two representatives from the City Council that'll serve as the planning committee for this mission. We will develop a format to provide updates to the county and city at our usual monthly meetings, and we'll provide updates to the county and city on the operation of the facility later on. And in closing, this facility is necessary for the safety and health of our citizens, and we always need to keep this point in mind.
All right, thank you, Bob.
You got it.
So Alex, Alex is the mayor of the city of Trenton, so I'm gonna ask him to proceed.
Again, this is part of us getting our due diligence together, coming up with an intergovernmental agreement, just like Bob had spoke, we met Friday and we spoke to a group from the University of Georgia that sent us a lot of information, and some of this is what we'll be going over here in just a few minutes. But the first thing I laid out there is, you know, the city has been in animal control business for a while, started out in the police department, and moved over into Parks and Rec. Commissioner Terry Powell is under him, and Ronnie Page is that director now. And we've got a facility that's in dire need of some upgrades, and we need to make it available for the public. It's in our old sewer department, and since nine eleven, a lot of that stuff is under lock and key, we can't get public back there, so we've been talking about this for a while to find a facility and get something built. So this year, in our 2025 approved city budget, we moved animal control as a new position with a, that you see here with the spreadsheets, and this is what we currently got budgeted. We moved Ronnie out of that, left some of the money in there, put him back under Parks and Rec as of right now, to start doing our part to see how we could balance our budget and work with revenues that we got to have an animal control, probably a manager for this facility. But there is some unknown things that we don't know based on the facility, the sewer department's power, water, and all that's been incorporated in that for years, so some of the things you see highlighted in yellow is some unknowns we'll have if we build a Bob, myself, and Monda was on a call Friday with Ms. Lisa Murlow, she's a director of a practism of animal welfare skills with the University of Georgia School of Law. We also had some training earlier this year, last year, with Trenton Police Department and Dade County Sheriff's Office with the same group, also with Jessica K. Rock, she's a state animal crimes prosecutor through the Prosecutor's Attorney of Georgia, and another gentleman that was also present with the University of Georgia that actually works under Ms. Lisa. What you see, the second thing is, is we ask her about some budgets with other counties, and this is animal control shelter budgets of Georgia counties with populations of twelve to twenty thousand residents. There's a lot of questions that we ask her, we were on that phone with her about two and a half hours, and she's very heavily with Athens-Clark County, and they have shared us some other resources, a good SOP that is in very good orders and up to date, but you can see these different counties and jurisdictions based off their 2025 populations from twelve thousand two hundred and seventy-seven population all the way to nineteen five ninety-four, and what they are putting in their current animal control budget. Is our budget that we have approved for the city of Trenton is seventy-seven thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. So we've got to start, and our goal is hopefully with moving with this intergovernmental agreement that we come up with these standard operating procedures. Both of our ordinances, county and city, this group would love to help us look at and get everything up to current law, current ordinances, what together, there's a lot of questions, both that, seeing how close they can be the same, but there may be some difference in the county versus in the city of certain things, but that's where we are, we just need to, Bob said it'd be great if it was a couple of us from both governments could work together since we're not, so we don't break any sunshine and just keep coming up with plans and errors of this, and as we all know, what's, how are we gonna pay for it? Like you said, building's the easy part, and again, here's a facility that we kind of come up with, a design based off what Cherokee County built seven years ago, we visited and they gave us some specs, and we whittled it way down to smaller, and if it's just an idea, does nothing in concrete, but we know that there's a need to keep moving forward with this, and that's just open for that where we need to go. So the biggest part is, you know, we gotta do this together, move forward, and we've got some provisions along with possibly adding a full-time animal control officer into the police department in the future, if our budget will allow, but that's a way we like to move forward, and it's getting harder for one department that has three or four different jobs to handle this, as many calls that comes through now and more for us, and it's something we, the county, have to look at as well, and we can maybe do something together with that. That's kind of where we are, and if any other commissioners would like to speak, Terry, your thoughts on any of that?
No, it's needed, we, we're limited to what we can do now, we, we are in a bad situation there, we, it's not easy to get to sometimes, and it takes a little effort to go down there, so anything we can do now to get this done, the sooner the better.
I'd like to say so. Well, first of all, I want to thank each and every one of you that has shown up here, because I've known for years you were out there, and I hope that these commissioners have taken time to read over some of these emails, because they're really, really good. This is a community problem, and it deserves a community response, and, and, and there's just, you know, we're a lot further down the road sometimes, I'm an animal rescuer and everybody knows it, and it's okay, you don't have to understand all that, but it is a community problem, and it's not, an animal shelter is not necessarily for the pet owners, because they take care of theirs, it's for the people out here, the stray animals that are running around out here, the cat colonies that are in, totally just out of control, completely out of control. It's public safety, these cats are diseased, these animals are diseased, these animals get aggressive when they're not fed, when they're neglected, and, you know, you have people going down the road and they're surrounded by animals, you have people that won't walk because they're afraid of getting attacked, their dogs get attacked, and I think that Officer Bradford over here can tell you, he get, he is inundated with calls, and we all just wanna be part of the solution, and I know it's, it's gonna be a burden on the taxpayer, but I'd also like to mention to you that with a, with a animal facility, there's also revenue streams. There's a, the biggest one, that's the big new wave out there, is a spay-and-neuter clinic, and we don't have near enough of them, but that's, that's a revenue stream, there's adoptions that bring in so much, there's fines and fees to try to make people, to enforce our ordinances, what fee we have, and we know we can't just go out here and, you know, put a bunch of ordinances out here, but, but we, but you know, it's kind of like when you have a roundabout in the middle of the road, I hate those things, but what the DOT says is it's, it's the safest way that you can travel in that particular area, it's why they came up with them, so you know what they do? They put it to where you have to go around it. So, you know, in some of these cases with these animals, it's not necessarily the thing we want to do, but sometimes we just have to do it, and sometimes people have to be made to understand and educate, and, and so I just wanted to thank you all for coming, and, and I want you to know that we have this new executive, Don Townsend, that I am just thrilled about, and we've got a great mayor here that's on board, and the rest of these commissioners, I think, you know, we're all willing to work together, and it doesn't matter what's happened in the past, let's, let's just try to get together and be part of the solution, and move forward and do what's best for our citizens and our animals.
Thank you.
As well, we appreciate the support. Another thing that the city, in y'all's time here with us tonight, another thing the city has done, and Ronnie had brought this, and Terry had brought this to us when I started almost nine years ago, is, you know, a lot of us remember Dr. Robert McKeg was our local vet for years, and he had retired and laid his license, and we tried to get other vets to help us, and we worked with some locals, but we are now, Dade County, or City of Trenton has Ms. Jennifer...
Baracco?
Zericore, I'm sorry, I couldn't say. But Ms. Jennifer has come on with the city of Trenton as our vet, it's also within our budget to that, to come work with us, to be part of that. We met Terry and her and myself, we've been looking at other shelters, she lives in New Home, she's a Dade County, and here to help and be a part, she's very excited about that, actually done some work today at the shelter, looking at a dog that we've had for a while and trying to get adopted out. We appreciate all the help from all the different rescuers and folks that helped do that, and all the fostering of a lot, that a lot of you do in doing that, but it is a community effort, we really appreciate that. So the biggest question, you know, for us now, we've all said this in our meetings, is how are we gonna pay for it? Once we get it built going on, is the biggest question, and what kind of moving forward with our intergovernmental agreement of some sort between these two commissions to make it better for our community and for some of our public.
Sure.
Sorry, it was.
All right. Mike, would you like to say anything before we?
I got to flip, Monda said it was glad to see a good turnout here, because it's a, this is a problem that a lot of people for over the years have been trying to, concerned about and trying to fix, and now's the time to fix it. I think all the, I know all the city commissioners, we're, we're ready, so if we can work something with the county, work a joint effort, I think it'd be great. Again, I appreciate all y'all's concern, too.
Thank you all. We'll start with the county commissioners on this side, and let's go ahead and have a general discussion about, we gotta stick to this agenda, and I think this all fits under the intergovernmental agreement, but Melissa, would you like to say anything?
Well, I, you know, I've been working on this since I came in, because that was one of my promises, was that, you know, the people voted on it, but the main thing that I really want to see or move forward is, as soon as possible, would be getting an officer that's licensed to, to make those calls and to help out Tommy and, and what's going on over there. I've studied the Trenton, the county ordinance, and to be real honest, they're not bad, they're not bad at all, there's a few things that, that need to be changed and worked on, but I just think we don't have this person to make these happen. So I'm ready to, to get to work, to get this done, but it, it comes all back to education, we're, we're building an animal control facility, we're not building a shelter, we will be working with the shelters, hopefully, so that this could be a positive thing and an ongoing thing that, that doesn't have to be a bad thing, it'll be, it'll be good if we're able to, to make that happen.
Okay. Commissioner Hartland?
Well, I was at a meeting with Monda the other day, and we discussed it, and I told her I, I do know that we need a animal facility, but I'm gonna shed some light on numbers on this facility. Y'all've got about, what'd you say y'all had, Alex, sixty-something thousand, you know, splotches?
Of the old one, but we're still got some in this new one.
So the county's got three hundred and seventy-five thousand in our splotch allocated for an animal facility. With some quick numbers that I've done on the one that we're looking at building, if you use a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build this building. I ran just preliminary numbers, not getting to the inside of the building, just the building, plumbing, electrical, concrete, we're at three hundred and two thousand with no G C money and let it off. So at this point, if we're looking at this building that we've got drawn out, we don't have enough money between what we've got and y'all've got to even, to start on it, and I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna say as far as me and the commissioner of the county, that I'm willing to go ahead and purchase a building to get it started when we don't have enough funds to complete it, or we're gonna have to scale this building down. The other thing is, is you showed us numbers on what it's gonna cost to run it, I mean, here's one, a hundred and fifty thousand to run Long County, you've got one in here at three hundred and forty-nine thousand, which is Rayburn County, I mean, Rayburn's at twenty dollars, it's pretty much twenty dollars per person, I'd say, man, woman, child, I know, if you take...
That was given to us from the lady at the University of Georgia.
Right.
She pulled that data, too.
So my question is, what are, what do you think it's gonna cost to run it for us? And how, but my, my same issue is what it was the other day, how are we gonna divide it up?
Yeah, that's what we're here for.
Or y'all, you know, is it fifty-fifty, eighty, twenty? I mean, how are we gonna do that?
Well, there's different options, she's done it, is they could do it like per animal, there's a couple of different ways that, three different models she gave us, if y'all remember this, Bob, and them, it was a flat rate per resident of city and county, or you could do intake by each county or city and pay by the animal somehow, or you can do a combination of both, that was just an example, because we asked those hard questions, what, and this is what she gave us. So, so we're going, we're doing our part a little bit right now, with right at eighty, so we can start out small and grow and see, but, you know, we, we also need some help to enforce this out in the community, too, and education, Melissa hit it really heavy, there's a lot of education, that was the biggest aspect she told us, is it takes a lot of education to the public to get out there.
What was those things, flat rate per resident, intake from city?
Yeah, she mentioned three models of, of how you split it, flat rate per resident of county and city, so you could take your incorporated, unincorporated, or you could take the intake between county and city of animals, but that'd be hard, because we, it'd be, you know, we could take what numbers we currently have, what that is, or you could do the flat rate and per animal fee, do a combination.
As right now, y'all've got, y'all've got y'all's own truck and stuff right now, though?
Yeah.
So the county would have to purchase that, and these are some numbers that Tommy has given us, to, if we purchase a truck and the equipment for that, we're looking at eighty-five thousand just for that.
We're in the same boat, too, because if officers out there doing it and they enforce it, they need to be able to camera the situation, they're an officer of the law.
Right.
So we would be in the same boat of having to get another vehicle to do that with, and if you have to arrest somebody, you gotta be able to bring them to jail.
And then you're looking at another eighty-one thousand for us on the county side for an off, for a deputy to be over this, so that's just the start of what it's gonna be on our general budget.
Well, we had mentioned as well, adding another one in the city budget.
Which, to my opinion, I feel like this comes way before the shelter, I mean, he, he needs it now, I mean, we've pulled the calls before, what was like, I forget what it was, but yeah, it was like one, I don't, I don't remember what it was, but it's like, to me, th, this number here is, like, we, we gotta start, and this is the problem, I mean, we're not, we're not able to, when the officer goes out, we're not able to enforce a lot of things or get a lot of things done, because the wording does need to be fixed a little bit, but we also need somebody that can be able to go do those calls.
Again, our, we just, we're just two months into our new budget, and when we start on our twenty-six budget in the fall, that was the goal, to add another officer.
And just to clarify, eighty-one thousand is not gonna pay?
Yes, that's...
Not in here, no, we don't make eighty-one, it'd be nice, but... That's, that's everything, like benefits, just insurance.
Uniforms.
All that, yeah, so...
Well, I'd rather go up than lower, because it's, it would, it's better that way.
That, that was the thing, as we move forward, if we get design on a facility, and then, you know, budget here is starting in another month or so for the twenty, twenty-six budget.
Well, that's us, we've got four months till we start working on ours, so that's...
And that's what I'm saying, is we've already put this in our budget this year for an animal, for a facility manager of some sort to take care of that, and some of the unanswers of the utilities, and if we decide to move this way, is, we'd have to do that input. The reason I have it one of each is they would back each other up, be on call every other week.
Right, yeah.
And sometimes if they need another assistance in the county or in the city, those two guys would be there to help. It's currently what they do now in law enforcement, plus it's another set of eyes out in the city and county that can enforce regular law if they have to, but they may...
I know, this is probably a dumb question, but the, the city officer could do county?
Yeah, we would.
We'd have to cross train.
Swear, man. Okay, okay.
That's what they do now.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to clear that up.
The county swore into the city, yes, ma'am.
Vice versa.
Yeah, yes, vice versa, yes, ma'am.
Bill?
Couple of questions, as Monda brought this up about spaying, neutering, and com and things, is a place to do that, is that included in this, or is that something that's gonna be added on?
That's, that's in that medical treatment area possibly in the future.
It's a very small area, and we discussed this from the very beginning, yeah.
So it is in here.
So you got the triage and the medical area that could be possibly to do that in-house?
We have a, we have a really young, ambitious vet that just came on board that lives in our county, and we're hoping, my idea would be for her to eventually, you know, she's been going and shadowing the clinic we use now, and she's really excited, and, you know, maybe down the road, you know, who knows, maybe she could be in there spaying and neutering all day.
So this, this vet fees, does it, what does it cover, and does it cover like spaying and neutering, or what?
No.
Is it a retainer fee for her, just so we, we have her on the other end of the phone, then she shows up somewhere and does an act?
Right now, she's under, she's a part-time employee of the city getting paid monthly for her services.
Okay, and...
And if that needs to grow, as it gets busier, that's something we'll have to negotiate with. That's, and that's another thing, I mean, she works full-time at, in Chattanooga with the facility, so this is kind of, she's off on Tuesdays right now, and a lot of protocols and procedures and policy has to come under that vet, just like we do with our EMS, you know, the officers in the field, we gotta be able to, sometimes animals that are vicious are hurting other animals or hurting, and they can't pick them up because they, they can't get to them, they need to be able to...
And also, they can't get the drugs to dart them.
That's, that's where I was going. We gotta have that stuff to do that, and we have... We gotta have that stuff to do that, and we haven't had it nine years.
Another question under supplies, is medications, or?
That's kind of what we've been bracing off from other facilities. We've got some ideas from Walker, Catoosa, Whitfield, and what we've done now, too.
I don't know what the population of Walker County is, y'all may know, but I've heard that their budget went from six hundred to nine hundred thousand, dropped back to seven hundred thousand.
I haven't.
Population is around that seventy thousand.
Yeah. And they're a lot bigger, both of them two are a lot bigger than us, and that's why we asked, if we knew that, even Whitfield that we've been talking to, that's why when we were meeting with Lady, Ms. Lisa, with the University of Georgia, she pulled these statistics from somewhere. That's what her main job is, that me and Bob and Monda talk to.
Yeah, and that's kind of, that's kind of where the education part comes into also, because, and I'm not sure with these, I see on here that some of them say animal control plus shelter. So that's why I was saying, you know, the education part is, is what is a animal control facility? What is a animal shelter? So you gotta really make that fine line, and then depend on your shelters and your rescues to help out your animal control facility, so.
So what is the plan for, how long do we hold them? How far do you come up with each?
Well, different things, that would be intake information, that's why you have an intake facility, that they come in, you don't try and affect a herd. I mean, that's one of the things that Jennifer and Terry and I talked about, the Athens-Clark County, they have a five-day stay-hold policy. Then if there's rescuers out there, and that'd be the thing of that shelter manager, is once those come in, you try your best to find them, who owns them. It could be a thing that every animal that comes in gets microchipped, or they get registered, you know. We have a registration in the city, but we haven't done it in years to register their animals every year. So there's things like that, that could put in policy, in ordinances, that once a dog's picked up, it's chipped, and it's registered.
And has it spayed?
And, well-
Second time.
Well, yeah, hang on. The, things like that. And if the animal is found, and say the owner finds it, they have an option to spay and neuter it, and they pay a specific fee. But if they pay, and this is what Athens done, if they don't spay and neuter, and the animal goes back out not spayed, they pay a whole lot higher rate. They pay like a hundred, it's a hundred and fifty dollars to get your animal back. This is an example she gave us. So you also gotta have a piece of software that knows where these animals are and keeping up with. When Audrey had sent you that, or sent us that information on her presentation last month, she uses that same software that Athens-Clark County has. So again, we gotta, we gotta know, just like our case reports and our cat events, we know how many times we go to the same house for drugs or heart attacks and things. It's the same situation with animals. If they get picked up a second time, they have to pay double the fee, plus they have to be spayed and neutered before they can leave, so that cost is on the homeowner, or the pet owner at that time. So that's some of the revenue streams that they use, and that was one example that they gave us. Adoption fees, you know, you can do adoption fees that, this adoption fee may help this many animals, and what they do. There's a lot of other organizations that help and wanna provide medicines, tick and flea, flea and tick, food, food's a big thing, that helps a lot. These organizations now have gained, have got that so much now. We did get a small spay and neuter grant in the city from the Department of Agriculture for fifteen hundred dollars this year. So, and it could be up to ten thousand, but we just got a little bit, because it's all we could get at the time, I guess, I think we probably, so. That's where the good ordinance is, looking at, again, this is Athens-Clark County's SOPs, looking at other ordinances, what could happen when these animals get picked up. A lot of times you rely on the owner to go get the animal spayed and neutered by signing a piece of document. If it never happens, then it repopulates again possibly, so.
Which, you know, I think, too, that all sounds wonderful and fantastic, it really does, but going back to an officer again, it's in our ordinance, it says that you have to have, the city and the county, that your dog has to be tagged and rabied. So if we had somebody to enforce that, that would bring in some revenue for these people that are out looking and getting these dogs that don't belong to anybody. So if you're, if you care about your dog, you're gonna go in, and you're gonna get it tagged, and you're gonna get its rabies shot. So these are things I feel like that should have already been going on, and needs to go on, to pull some revenue in, so that we would be able to have, pay for this officer. So it's kind of, you know, all that is what we need, a hundred percent, but we need to start at some, some basics that we already have, and that's, that's my-
Well, I agree, that's why I said we haven't followed ours like we should have.
Yeah, that's, so that's what concerns me.
And some of that, we gotta start forward somewhere, but we also gotta have some better rules and regulations on these as well, to give these guys more efforts out there.
And just as Alex says, we've got to start somewhere, and we're sitting here and we're talking about, well, you know, doing this or not, maybe we're gonna do this or whatever. This whole room is full of people that has resources, that they have a, they have a relationships they've built with other people over the years. You know, and I hate to keep bragging on her, but alone, this little girl sitting on the front, and the reason I say little girl, because every time y'all talk to me, y'all say that little girl, Audrey, she raised over four hundred thousand dollars last year. And she's right here in our county, and you wouldn't believe the thousands of dollars that has went right back here, sending dogs up north, feeding dogs, spaying, neutering. We spayed at a thou, we spayed and neutered a thousand sixty-nine animals last year with our spay-neuter transport. We have so many resources, we're already doing a lot of the work out there, and we're passionate about it. Anne Brown's been doing this for forty years. We, we don't burn out.
We don't have no, I mean, there's not, I don't disagree with you at all, I think it's fantastic, and you're a blessing to us for sure, but what I'm saying is, we're, we have, we have them, I have them right here. We have ordinance right here that we are not doing. So we've got to get started.
Even the two ladies at University of Georgia, and that attorney says they need some cleaning up.
So what I would like to make a decision on what starts first, like, are we, like, we could sit here and talk about all the good things that's happened, but we're not getting anywhere. We need to make a decision and go forward.
So we need to decide if we're gonna construct a facility, what size?
Yes.
And some type of agreement, that's the biggest thing today. A lot of this stuff's gonna have to happen with this committee moving forward, and a lot of help.
I agree, a hundred percent.
And a small part each time, so.
But we could talk about programs, we could talk about all the things that, but we're not getting to, this needs to be built.
Well, I was just answering questions, like whole policies, that's just some examples that they gave us.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I mean, it's not against you or, or anybody, it's just, let's, let's figure this out, let's get, let's do it.
We may not have all the money to build this whole building, to, to fill it out on the inside, but I say, let's, let's order it, let's get started. If people will see that we've got some sweat in the game, they will help, there's so many resources out there, just, Audrey, what have you and I spent on our little facility with kennels, fences, property? And we would much rather it have went to the shelter. We, you know, we would much rather do that, but we just can't force you to take it.
Yeah, well, and that, too, is a question, how does that work? Like, how do we, as a county, how do we take money that is not, belonged to us, or we didn't budget?
That's part of the intergovernmental agreement, between the county and the city.
And you take donations to the facility.
Right, they'll probably not for profit.
Not-for-profit, true.
Before we get too far, Bob, I know you already had a presentation, but you wanna follow up with anything?
Yeah. I understand exactly what you're saying there, about if we have a city officer and a county officer, right, and get them supported and funded to do their thing. As I sit here, and what I'll be losing sleep over is the following. We're opening up somewhat of a Pandora's Box here, because there's a whole lot of different issues here. There is no doubt about it. But my thing about it is, we need to figure out some modus operandi, some way to handle issues before this Taj Mahal gets built. That's the bottom line, for example, for example. As I've gone around here, since this topic came up at county commission meetings, wherever I saw a group of people, whether it is Jenkins Park with my son, Kayden, or honestly, at McDonald's, or wherever I am, right? I ask people, well, what about this, and what about that? And I won't bore everybody with a whole lot of different stories, but we haven't been consistent, right? In how we handle issues, right, with animals. The thing about it is, I want us to figure out, right, the proper way, and establish that, right, of, they go out, the officer goes out, captures the animal, brings it somewhere, right? And what's the next couple of steps that we handle? Because, you know, I think if we, these citizens that are sitting out there, I mean, many of them are deeply engaged in this world, right, but there's no doubt about it, I've heard a million times, we need some kind of a program, we need a facility, right? We need to do it for the safety of our citizens and the animals that are out there floating around. So my thing about it is, before, and I, I get everything in the diagram, I went over it the other day, right? Everything in there is a viable function, there is no doubt. But hey, you look at other buildings being built, and it's, it ain't gonna be cheap, right? But in the meantime, we've gotta figure out, county exec, then how do we, right, deal with it tomorrow, right? How do we deal with it next week, the next month? So we have a standard way of dealing with things. That's my take on it.
I have one more comment, and then I'm done. I know, we love our little cats and our dogs, but, you know, this also goes back to education. There was a donkey running around a neighborhood, and who ended up with the donkey? I did, because nobody could care for him. So it's, not only do we need to make sure that this facility is what we need for cats and dogs, which is a huge problem, but there is a problem, which I'm sure Tommy could say, with farm animals, and we are in that area, and that, that, it goes all the way up the chain, from the smallest to the largest, and, you know, that's where this officer comes into place that is licensed to, to measure those animals that are not being fed right, or, you know, to be able to tell this, and as of right now, we really don't have that, right?
We don't train a lot on that, we have a little bit, but that's something that when officers gonna have to, do the training on that.
So, you know, just, I just wanna say, you know, keep that in mind, because I know of many cases where there's large animals that are involved, and I don't think that a lot of people think about that. I was thankful that I rehomed this donkey that I have fed for a year yesterday, so I'm very happy about that, because he sure did eat a lot, but, you know, so just, you know, keep those things in mind as we're going for this, because it might start at as, as this, and it may get to be this, so.
Well, the thing about it is, that, you know, I had two great parities that we bought and paid for and took care of, et cetera, et cetera, but I want Billy Massengale to come and remove the invisible sign at the end of my driveway that says, "If you don't want your dogs anymore, or you don't care for your dogs anymore, drop them off at Bob's house." Everybody with me? Right?
We all-
It happens all the time.
They're all, they're all over the county.
Yep, I know, that's what I'm saying, it happens a lot. So that's just another thing, yeah, and the last two, my seven-year-old convinced me to keep, right? So I've got four now, but he actually does take care of them, right? But the thing about it is, that's just another side little issue, right, that we have to figure out how to do.
Yeah, even, even a manager of the facility, or somebody that works with these groups and taking care of them, that's the things, and then we gotta make those hard choices, how long do we keep them? These last animals, I think, we've had since November twenty-seventh at the city, and we still got two, Ronnie, we've got three now. We just picked one up the other day, or last week.
Yep, yes.
And the other two have been here since November twenty-seventh. Now, there was another, somebody looked at one today for fostering, we keep them out on social media. Red members have tried to find foster homes, but all the foster homes are full, so it's tough. So that's some of the things that we gotta get in, if we do get the help out there with our officers, we still gotta have some guidelines in SOPs, and how to handle that and what to do.
And sometimes, when, when you bring these animals in and put them in a shelter, like one of the ones that we have in our city shelter, right, the health starts going bad, you know what I mean, and that type of thing, so you just gotta think about the different things that can happen if you keep them too long.
Yeah.
I think that we need to know that this building, and my question was, is it gonna do what we need to do? The, the intake is a treatment room, it's not a triage room, as, it's gonna be things, and the time you get a couple of people and table, and you're doing operations and things like that, I just wanna make sure that it's gonna do what needs to be done, and we've got a place to house the drugs, or whatever, you know, you're gonna need, and the vaccines and, and stuff, and let's don't make a mistake and not build.
That's why some of them have to be isolated when they come in, and be treated for certain things, and checked before they go further. That's one of the big things, all of them push to us, that they gotta have an isolation area for your dogs, puppies, and cats as they come in.
I'd like to add also, honey, and y'all know I've got plenty to say, but there is so many grants out there that will help with this shelter, that'll help build this shelter. There's, we get grants right now for spay and neuter, we get grants for healthy dogs, we got grants for like dogs that are, that are pet, pets of elderly people. I mean, there's just all kinds out there, but this is what they say. You know, grants, y'all deal with grants all the time, they're very specific, and they're like, you want a shelter grant? Well, where's your shelter? You want, you want to do some capital improvements to your shelter? Well, where's your shelter? You know, we don't have anything, and I, I am confident, and I'm, I'll be one of them, if we could just get the building constructed, it will blow your mind, because I'm telling you, ours gets blown all the time, at the grants, the, the donations that will come in. And, and I'm not saying, we've already done this. Audrey, how much money did you raise last year?
A lot.
And you know what? It's not from the, it's not from local people, it's from people in other countries, it's just all over everywhere. People, you know, they, people are passionate about things, and there's a lot of people that are passionate about animal welfare, they, they're, they're out there. And I'm not saying you have to feel like I feel, I don't think it's the taxpayer's responsibility to house all the cats and dogs that they can come up with. Believe me, I can make the hard decision. I have, I get a lot of grief from some of these people, because I can say sometimes, look, the money don't need to be spent on this animal, because it don't even have a home to go to when it's done, when we, if we spend all this money on it. So, you know, that's not what we're saying, but like, I'm saying, we had a lady that died a few weeks ago, she had fifteen dogs at her house, the sheriff's department starts calling in the middle of the night, and we're thankful that they called, because we wanna help them. They don't know what to do, so we pull all of our stuff together, we take vans up there, and we get all these dogs, and we pawn them out here and pawn them out there. What would they have done? And we have that situation happen a lot. Just this last year, we worked eight hoarding cases on Sand Mountain, and when we go in and work them, y'all, there's a lot of stuff going on up there that, that you, I didn't even know about, but you go in, and we clean it up. I mean, it's unreal at what's going on around here right now, we just need y'all to come to the game with us, you know? Come be a part of the team.
Cost us, yeah. We talked about this the other day, Monda, and y'all, you, the story's the same as it was a week ago.
Well, you're not gonna discourage me, Phillip.
I'm not trying to discourage you.
Clark up here on the side of the mountain, one point six million dollars, if you're wanting to do? That's what I'm reading. Animal shelter-
That's not where we're at.
Stay on profit.
That's not where we're at.
Yeah, there you go.
I'll tell you what, as a commissioner, I'll be willing to give you the three hundred and seventy-five thousand, and will a lot of hundred thousand dollars a year, and y'all run it completely, for the county and the city. But you know what? You're gonna come back, say that's not enough. I'm not gonna pull the trigger and then aim the gun. What's it gonna cost? That's all I'm asking.
I don't expect you to pull the trigger, I don't expect you to be for about anything comes up around here, 'cause you never are.
All right, guys, let's, let's be cordial.
All right, all right.
Stay on profit, that's what, our whole thing- Stay on profit, that's what our whole thing was, is this discussion, it's not firing back.
One thing I do wanna say, and I don't know, Dr. Jennifer, I didn't get the last name, but thank you very much for what you do, I just, thank you.
So, as we all know, the biggest thing is how we gonna pay for it, year to year, with tax, with our budgets. That's been the project, and that's what we need to stay on. Are we gonna discuss the location and construction or something, if we need to set the committee of these two, that we, we, me and Bob talked about this, so we can stay within sunshine of law to keep moving forward and come back, or are we willing to get into an intergovernmental agreement for the purpose of this?
Yeah, so, let's talk about the, this, the location. We've, I've heard, I've been here eighteen years, and I've heard a lot about animal control, and we've already, uh, not poured a pad, but we've cleared a pad. I don't know even if that road has a technical name to it. It, but...
Billy, what's the...
Sunset Drive.
What's the name of the road going back to the, the possible location for this animal control facility? No name at all?
Feeling I have something animal related.
Yeah, that's perfect, we can name it.
So, so we've talked about that, are we good with that location? Is everybody good with that location?
I'm good with that location, as long as it's able to, to grow if we need it, like I said, because of larger animals, um, I've looked at it, I think it looks great, um, it's a great location.
Okay.
Um...
I, I've discussed it internally here, right, I discussed it with Mr. Massengill, right? Just to say, hey, give me the orientation of what it, what's, what it's, the preparation that's gone into it, right? So I'm satisfied with that.
And how long you tell it?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
What we first talked about, we had decided, we were gonna build a pad, and over a year, we've got different projects going in the county, the pad is four times bigger than what was asked for when it started, as of now.
All right. Water, sewer and power is at the top of the hill, the only thing is extending water from the edge of the road at the, the, the par, the parallel road coming in, when you come out of the...
Transfer site.
When you come out of the transfer recycle, or when you exit out, that road there is a two-lane road, it's a wide enough. We will continue that to the back, we'll have to get water up that way.
Okay.
All right, so we have a location, do we...
Yes, there's a sewer manhole right there, everybody's...
We concur with that, right?
Anybody dissatisfied about that?
Any?
You know what, I, I would be happy with anything that you, that you...
Yeah, so let's just...
Let's check that one off.
So can we agree that that's the future location, all right? Okay, and, uh...
Well, that's good.
Yeah. That's success right there.
Yeah.
All right, now, um, as far as the construction of the animal control facility, uh, there probably are grants, I don't know about grants for construction of a facility, but I, I'd be as surprised if there were not. So, uh, okay, we would encourage, this is a good time to go ahead and see if we could apply for those kinda grants, 'cause typically you wanna start, you wanna, I noticed to proceed from the grant approval before you get in the middle of a project, and then they say, well, you should've done that before you started the project. So, um...
Yes, sir. And you're nodding your head a lot, please address what you're trying to say.
Um, I go way back with Monda and Ann Brown. Uh, we've raised, uh, we've raised money at the time, and that was a long time ago, I don't know what you have, hopefully you have that still in the bank, I don't, I don't know, but there is plenty of money out there, you gotta look for it. Right, Audrey?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Humane Society of the United States, have y'all ever talked to them? It's a major group in the country. They have plenty of information. Alex, well done with the University of Georgia.
Yes, sir.
Attorney to make recommendations, go to Humane Society of the United States.
Thank you.
Big time, tons of information in there. Uh, Monda, let's come up with a list for you guys.
Okay. The Atlanta Humane Society is, is...
There you go.
Is the most wonderful resource I've ever come across.
Then if you don't mind, seriously, I think that's a, I think that's a very viable course of action that, sir, what's your name?
Jimmy Stewart.
Jimmy, thank you, you know, but the thing about it is, drop us a note, okay, you're right?
I will work with this young lady over here, and we'll...
By all means, okay, yeah, sit, and Monda can work with us, right? And then, you know, provide that, and we'll, we'll be going for it.
But I don't want this laid on us.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying that we have some initial dollars, and if we can get other dollars, some other resources to make this happen, why not?
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
So, how, if you don't mind, how much money is, do, do we have to start?
What does the city...
We have currently sixty-one thousand dollars in the old twenty-fifteen splash that we're trying to get done before we have to get rid of it, or the market revenue, it seems it's pretty hard. We're just looking at a metal building, uh, pre-packed metal building with sides on it, ready to go. Again, this was just a shot, looking at what it was, this is nothing in concrete, if we need to go smaller, we can, but we're trying to get every resource we needed that we knew could make it better. But again, you gotta do the mechanical, the electrical, and the plumbing of it, uh, we don't know what that cost is, neither yet.
Well, it can be modular, you add on to it.
Yeah, that's what we talked about, you can, most of these buildings, if you can do a section at a time.
And one more question, um, how did you guys raise money to rebuild the city? Old courthouse, where did that come from?
That was SPOSS funds primarily, and, uh, there is a not-for-profit group in place for donations for windows and...
Yeah, all those windows were donated.
You know, things like that.
A whole separate group that works on...
I understand, but it's beautiful that you did a great job, but...
Same similarity with, uh, animal control facility, and I think there's plenty of opportunity to raise not-for-profit funds, and y'all have already got groups out there, I don't, I don't think we have to recreate that wheel for people who might wanna donate.
Hey, Don.
Uh, let's, let's...
We have to stay in the purview of the, but is it got related to grants or something?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'm hearing numbers and working on plans and things like that, but has anyone thought about a property that's already your name, having big enough to facilitate the animals?
That's what...
That it can be fixed up?
That's what we have, that's what we're talking about, we already own the property, is that what you're talking about?
And also, y'all are talking about grants and things like that, but I watch concerts all the time, I'm a big, big, big animal lover. I love animals, we have these problems on Sand Mountain, it's strange. Has anybody talked about, you know, or talked to movie stars, you know, who are talking about grants and stuff like that? Catherine Heigl is a big animal advocate, uh, Keanu Reeves is, you know, if funding is a problem, then can y'all not take donations from private cities?
Yeah, and that's what we were just talking about, if they have not-for-profits, especially five oh one C threes or whatever, that's an awesome idea, I mean, I think that's something we need to, we need to explore, ever, revenue source, and, uh, but with sixty-one thousand from the city, three hundred and seventy-five thousand from the county, that's four hundred and thirty-six thousand.
Well, we've also got, we've got some allocations inside the current splash.
Oh, okay.
I have to remember the, I can't remember that total that we done.
Right.
We knew, we knew that we were gonna, we just held that last bit to help get something started, but we, we thought if we could buy a building, pretty reasonable, uh, maybe contract MEP out, then we could start bidding it out. And you gotta, you gotta, you gotta bid a, build a facility that's, can take a beating and washing all the time and...
Right.
Everything, and again, it's, it's gonna cost, just like that, Mr. Harline said, we're, we're gonna be...
So can we agree, like, I don't know if it would be, um, I don't, we just, we gotta take a step, so would that step be putting the concrete down?
We don't need to put the concrete, 'cause we gotta, gotta have all the MEP done, mechanical, electrical, plumbing to do that.
So then where, where does that put us? Like, we all agree, we're going forward, so...
Right, I would suggest we go ahead with plans, I mean, the plans you've got have been...
Well, if it's too much, then we either need to cut it in half and redesign it.
Well, if we, if you're talking about private money, we've got enough between what we've got and y'all've got to get the, we should have enough to do the metal building, the plumbing, and the concrete.
Right.
Get the power stubbed up.
And then we could always, we could always put it up for it.
Yeah, like, like the, the kennels that we were talking about, these sixteen kennels in the back.
Right.
When we were at Cherokee, every bit of those buildings, the new building and existing was donated, they put it out there and people built every one of the kennels.
Yeah, yeah.
All the kennels in the isolation, and the puppies and cats was donated.
But you're gonna have to do the, the concrete, the metal building, and the plumbing, the, you know, the plumbing will have to go in, then pour the concrete, and then put the metal building, so you're gonna have to have the...
If you get the building with just the piers, we can get it up and get it going, get the MEP, I mean, that's one way, or we, or we're gonna stop and hire an MEP now.
If we could get the building, and we could take this area you have, Alex, here for, for, that could be used for spay and neuter, I am confident, more than confident, I can secure the money in hardly no time to put the spay-neuter clinic to work almost automatically.
See, that's what I was saying, you know, earlier about, we need to figure out the true no-kidding standard operating procedures, right? And the spay and neutering should be a viable component of those SOPs, considering all this animals that we have, that, that are, are concerned. You know, the, the more we talk about it, I think this, this, we have a location, we have enough now to put the plumbing in, right, and the metal thing, so if when we're writing grants, they say, well, where's your shelter, we can send them a picture of the damn thing, right? And say, here it is, right, you know, and we don't have to tell them that we're still working on the inside of it, right?
And it goes even further up, we need an officer to be able to know what is...
I...
Well, I think within the months of y'all's budget, that could be a thing.
Well, we, we should be able to do something.
We can, I was just trying to get through that one.
I think as we address our new budgets for the year, we'll just have to realize that's a given, right, and we have to have that, right?
If we had this spay-neuter clinic going, listen, I don't care to tell you, y'all, I, I, I've wanted to put one in my place down here, but it just don't work. Uh, I mean, I already have Marion County, uh, pledged me money for Mark, which is the biggest animal rescue over there. I had a rescue out of Chattanooga, which is one of the biggest rescues there, I mean, these people have the money, they're not just talking, and...
Well, I think that's a great takeaway for us, don't you, Monda, you know what I mean, that...
Well, if we're gonna do it, let's do it.
I, that's what I'm saying, I think this is a good step here.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Yeah.
So, do you wanna go ahead and move forward with the MEP?
We could do an RFP out, get some ideas, if we wanna go with this plan, I have showed it as preliminary, let it look, the guy that was doing our, that y'all hired to do the, uh, ports facility engineering, that company is also the engineer that won the RFP for the elections facility. And they're a great group of guys, and they've done a few of these, but by our, both of our procurements, if we go our way, our procurement, we have to RFP it out. Uh, we've had a couple of different building, uh, companies just looking online, we talked about like a ten-foot tall wall, we don't need a lot of height, you know, what we say, four twelve pitch, and four twelve pitch, and then get them to work the doors in like we currently have, uh, on the outsides to try to do that as well, so. And that, that was my thought, to get the building in with the piers, and then we can get the MEP moving his time. A lot of these kits are out here ready to go, bought and installed, all that one ready to go, but do the whole pad, we'd have to have a complete set of MEPs and a plumbing price and electrical price, which are gonna be a lot of stuff in this floor.
Mm-hmm. And y'all, there's people out there, there's professionals out there that will, uh, you know, that work with shelters too, I, I've known of that, you know, will come in and do a lot of stuff, they'll just donate stuff, I mean, I, I've even had both of the Lawson's here, uh, you know, which they, they do excavating and stuff.
Well, our pad's built, done, a lot of that's already done, and we've got the resources to do that now.
So, is it OLM or OEM or...
Well, that was one, that, that was the one that, I just had him look at it when he come up and was working with us on the elections facility, but, yeah, that was the, we would have to put it out and give it to...
I mean, you can do an RFQ just to figure out who you wanna use, but, I mean, maybe, done several county buildings already, if you wanna, are y'all good with that firm, engineering firm? Okay, we're good, the county's good with that, if the city's good with it?
We are too, yes.
All right, so I recommend they move forward with getting MEP and getting the plans finalized, so you can get a bid package, 'cause we don't even know what it's gonna cost until we can...
And if we could get it in, uh, portions.
Well, we could get the building put out, 'cause we're gonna look at a red iron type building with insulation and all like that, but the interior, like Phillip's telling you, a lot of this was block walls of what we've seen from other facilities, that's an oxide den, so you can pressure wash everything. Crains in every room, uh, exhaust fans in every room. Uh, when Cherokee's, again, this was a quarter of Cherokee's buildings, it was several layers deep. That dog isolation was the only room that I smelled anything wrong, but then there was four dogs that had come from their landfill, had been there for months, they finally got them, and they were detoxing them out, getting that stuff out of, that was, you know, but that was some resources, uh...
Right.
The pressure washing company that they, when they done, again, I'm off, off kilter a little bit, but they put the pressure washing system in, as long as you bought their chemicals from them, that would neutralize pressure washing. It was, one of the rooms back here for the equipment rooms was that system was setting, it could be plugged in throughout the whole facility.
I know we're still doing estimates and that kinda thing, do, do we have a ballpark figure of how much this may cost?
It's what Phillip ran on the square foot, a hundred and fifty dollars.
You do a hundred and fifty, that's seven hundred and fifty, but I think that's probably gonna be on the lower end of this.
Okay.
I don't know, the school just built a heating facility over at the high school, and it's a sixty-by, I think, and they give a little over seven hundred thousand, it has zero on the inside, it's heating and air, and that's it, no plumbing, no nothing.
So if it's a, if it's a building, it's so much, and it can be added on to later, we were just cramming down what we thought we need, talking to other folks with areas to do what it needed to do, to have a...
And this, this draft here, Alex, that we looked at the other day, can this be built modular wise?
I'm sure it can, I mean, whoever building we can.
I'm just thinking about that, if, if you, if you start building it, and I'm thinking out loud here, I'll probably embarrass myself here, but if, if you did it in sections, that's, that's what I think, right? You know, and we started off with, uh, a reception area, right? A spay and neuter area, right? And some storage area for animals, right? And then as we get more funding in, we could add on over time, would that be a viable course of action?
We gotta have an isolation area as animals are brought in.
Uh, that's what I meant, well, I call that the reception area, I didn't know the right name.
Emily works at McCamey, and she's, she's, she's probably, she's a wealth of information. What are you, what are you hearing, is, is that viable, what he's saying?
Depending on the manufacturer, yeah, I mean...
It's more expensive that way.
Facility should be something that's considered before the construction happens, because the more this thing gets run in, the more citizens it's helping, the more animals you're gonna be holding. So that really, like, anticipation of having more animals than you're initially planning for should definitely be consideration.
Yeah, I think it would just be more expensive to, to do something like that, and then, then you're just in the same situation that we're in, but you got a, you know, a little building that there's nowhere to go.
Anything's possible, we're talking about, again, we're, just like when we were building the elections facility, of the growth of the county is, don't build it for now, build it for what the future could be for next twenty-five or thirty years, and uh, I'm a forward-thinking guy myself, I do, as I approach y'all with everything we do in emergency services and IP-wise, we're looking in five, six years ahead already now.
But I'm not, but I'll tell you this, when you build a shelter, it doesn't matter how big you build it, you can fill it up. And I, I don't, I'm not looking to build, I mean, we need a good size, but I'm not looking to want to make this thing bigger and bigger and bigger, so it can hold more and more and more. What I want to do is, I want to put a lot of effort in, in the prevention, the education. You know, if we have these ordinances, and we've got officers that, that can and, and will enforce them, then what happens is, you, you start, you start changing that mindset in the community, and then over time, people, people understand, well, their dog is gonna run loose, if it gets picked up, it's gonna cost them. Well, if it, it gets caught the second time, we have a, we have an ordinance in place that says, it, it's mandatory that it's spay-neuter, because if they're not gonna keep it put up, then it don't need to be out here populating everything everywhere. And so, so what you do is, is prevention, you try to prevent the spay and neuter aggressively. Spay and neuter, spay and neuter, because that keeps the animals from coming, the unwanted litters. If you keep them from coming, they don't wind up in shelters, they don't wind up on the streets, they don't wind up hungry and aggressive. So, that's what, as, as animal folks, that's what we think, we're not wanting to just keep building and, building and keeping a bunch of animals, it's not good for animals, it's not good for people, it's not good for your pocketbook, it's, it's, it's just not the way you do it. We just need something feasible, uh, just like when the lady died. I mean, what, what would they have done? We had another man that died up here, and you know what, there was nowhere for the animals, um, I don't even wanna talk about that one, that one's... But we've had some really, really bad situations, and so, so I don't want you to think in your mind, we wanna build this, and then we wanna just keep adding and filling it up with dogs and cats.
Well, and that's, that's what I mean, you know, we've talked about it before... That, we're building an animal control facility. We're not building a shelter.
Yes.
Where the shelter part comes into play is where the money comes, and people wanna help, and they want this. Then, I mean, that's how McCamey started out. I worked with McCamey twenty years ago, you know, when it was a little teeny building. So, you know, I know, I've worked in rescue for over twenty years. I know how, how it goes. And we're building an animal control facility where a shelter and rescues will help us.
Okay. Um, as far as the next thing goes, the IGA, we could be here for three days talking about that. So, um, what I recommend is creation of a committee.
Yep.
And we don't, I'm not a, there's too many committees in the world. But anyway, uh, Bob would-
I, I don't mind. Uh, I know that Bob and I've talked a lot about this, so I don't mind.
So the two reps from the county would be myself and Melissa.
Okay. Do you wanna recommend? I guess Monda, no?
Good.
Okay.
All right, so Monda, enter.
Yeah.
And I think we should definitely, I don't know if Tommy wants to be, but I think an officer should definitely be-
Well, we can meet, we can participate as a group like this.
I don't know.
We could be, I don't know, mm, we got our county attorney here, not to put you on the spot. But, um, is it possible for us to, sir, own there as ex officio, or can we, should we not be in the room at all?
No, it is possible to be there. I mean, uh, you know, this is subcommittee of, of admission, so we would need to, uh-
The advertisements.
For the mayor and the executive.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, 'cause listen, we can, we can, we all know, we gotta have y'all.
We gotta have all of us. It's not just us. It's all ten, all ten of us here.
Well, I know, but I know.
It is. It's all ten of us.
And we gotta have everybody.
And, and the people are here supporting us that has elected us to be here, and then we gotta work with our law enforcement's on both sides. So, we got a lot of homework ahead of us, and that's what we, we signed up for, to be in these positions and everything we do. So that's, I mean, it's not just us, it's all of us. I know.
Okay, so we have Melissa-
Sorry.
Bradford, Bob Woods, uh, Terry Powell, Monda Wood, and the mayor, and myself. And we will get together, uh, as much as it takes.
Let, let's set a, uh, what I would like to do, is I'd like to set a set meeting.
Yeah.
Just, just putting it three months, or six months, or a year.
Yeah, I agree.
No, I'm saying every week or every other week.
I'm with you.
And then, uh, we work it out, work out the detail. That'd be a set, a set day. Set day of the week.
Yeah, now, here you go. I'm raising little boys, so I want this during school hours.
Yes.
Yes.
I can't have any more nighttime meetings, 'cause it's not a high-five moment back home.
I'm fine.
Not a high-five moment.
Can we go ahead and set this, so that, and I would prefer, like, if it was, like, at the beginning and maybe the end of the month, or something like that.
I tell my wife that I belong to the county, so to speak, the first two weeks of the month, and I belong to my family the second two weeks of the month. So let's, let's try to get it during the first two weeks.
So let me explain the reason we have to do this. There's something called the sunshine law in the state of Georgia. Sunshine law says that you, we can't just have a meeting, uh, that's a, of more than two commissioners at any time in the, in the room. Two county commissioners or two city commissioners. We can have two or three, depending on how mixed they're going from city to county. But anyway, so, but when we do have a subcommittee meeting like that, or a committee, I should say. What that means is we'll have to advertise that as a public meeting. We'll have probably some at city hall, probably some here. Uh, it gives us the ability to work with engineering firms, uh, whoever it is, OLM or OEM or whatever. Uh, they may have questions that they need to meet from time to time. Now, it's not also to say that you can't take it back to a city commission meeting, and we bring it back to a county commission meeting. We need to do that. Uh, maybe put it on the agenda as a permanent thing until we can work this out to get a report, at least monthly or every other month. So, uh, that's why we have to do what we were doing, uh, as far as that, just letting the public know. You've had your, yeah.
Yes. Don't reinvent the wheel, guys. It's, this, little shelters have been done for eons in counties around us.
Yeah, that's where we-
Walker County had the small, when I moved here thirty years ago, the, wasn't bigger than your table. And now they have something, and they keep adding on to that. McCamey's twenty-five years ago was nothing. But just start somewhere, but how you run it, how the officers work. You know, what, what, what the people in the county need to understand, it's been done a million times.
Yeah.
Just ask. Alex, we need to go to, to-
Well, I, I got-
We need to go to different counties that were done this.
We, we, we got Athens Clark, we got Cherokee's. We, we've got them. We've been doing it for a little bit, and that's what-
Okay, good.
The, the attorney really helped us with a lot of stuff and brought some things together.
And also have, have, had to build it. It's been done.
Yeah, I, I don't like to reinvent neither, Jimmy. I think we need to. It's already been done, and the attorney's saying that both ordinance, they've looked at both their city and county and say it can need a little bit of updating. And, uh, and that's where the officers will have that enforcement off that ordinance.
Uh, we did ask Steve Odine, the chief of the police in Trenton, and Major Tommy Bradford here tonight. We appreciate y'all being here. Uh, we realize that enforcement is huge in this. And so, uh, it kinda falls under the realm of code enforcement, kind of, and, and also law enforcement. We've, we've discussed this, meaning, uh, I think everyone's discussed this. Meaning, if the county has one officer, and the city has one officer, one officer can't do it all the time. I mean, they gotta go on vacation, they gotta go to, home and take a, a nap and a bath every now and then. So, you know, so we're hoping to have that worked out. Do y'all wanna say anything? I didn't wanna ignore y'all.
Excuse me, before y'all start, um, Chief Odin would like Officer Floyd from the city to come up and talk to, right? Officer Floyd.
Go ahead, Steve.
No, we're good. No, we have no problem with that. We work with the county, Chetaway. We tried to talk to Alex. We talked about swapping rotations every other weekend for officers being on call and all that. Our patrolman will help out. That ain't a problem, is it?
Don.
Yeah, that's basically what we discussed, yeah.
Yeah.
Training, I mean, they gotta be trained, so.
There's specific training when it comes to animal control.
Yeah.
And, uh, it, you know, it's not necessarily across the board, I think, in law enforcement training, but there's a very specific training for this. And it's also, I think, important to have a post-certified officer. When you go on someone's private property, you better know what you're doing, you know, 'cause it can get very dangerous. Uh, I'm sure Audrey could testify to that, and Monda, and Anne, and everybody else. You never know what you're stepping into.
Well, and that way, they can handle the whole case.
Yeah, that's right.
They don't have to have a second party involved that don't know the laws as well as they do, so.
Right. Does anybody have anything else to say?
Well, I wanna thank you guys, because it's, it's took us a long time to get here. Even you, Phillip. I'm, I appreciate you being here.
Well, it, it's a tough situation we're all in. And I was in that meeting, and that was the same question. That's what I beat that this meeting was for, was these two main things. If this is too big and we need to do it, then we need to do it. We can start out small and address this again. But, you know, again, it's the money. We don't know what it's gonna be, and things are sky-high right now, uh, what we're looking at, so.
And there may be times that we need public input, and we'll invite you back. I mean, we wanna hear your concerns, and we appreciate everyone that came tonight. I here took a Monday night, it's today Monday, it's Tuesday, never mind. It's Tuesday night. And, uh, we appreciate y'all coming out, and, uh, but we'll do this again hopefully soon, and-
Well, what is, yeah.
We need to hear from-
What, what, when is our meeting?
Y'all's is a-
It's that first, first meeting.
Get together immediately.
Send a email out pretty quick, and everybody agree, or y'all wanna?
Y'all just come up, and we'll figure that out here very shortly. Any other, as far as this goes, I'm sorry.
I have a question. Do we have a percentage of pet owners in the twenty thousand or so residents of Baytown? You know, lose percentage?
I have a lot of.
An easy way, I may not have the most popular opinion, but I come from, I'm from Maryland. I come from a much more conservative one. Um, we had to provide proof of rabies and, um-
Tag.
The, the pet ownership.
Yeah, that's what we were talking about.
Yeah, city, city, city in county. It, it's in our ordinance, so it just doesn't get-
Enforced.
Enforced.
We had to pay, every person, every resident of our city and bar in the county had to pay ten to fifty dollars, depending on if your animal, what, what kind of animal, and how old your animal was. And whether they were microchip and, um, spayed or neutered, and the price went up if they were not. And that would be a very easy way to break in hundreds of thousands of dollars.
That's, that's one of those multiple revenues that we didn't get into now, but that's exactly right, as Commissioner Bradford said, and us. We have not been enforcing that ordinance on both sides. Again, it's the people and the place to do it, and the person to do that.
Yeah, and it comes back to not only in having that enforced, but it gives the officers that go out to these bad calls the authority. If the dog is not tagged or rabies tagged, then it gives them the authority to do what they need to do. So, so it just, you know, it kinda plays a role with, with, just getting started, that first step, um, and getting-
I mean, we-
The officers what they need to be, uh, in that position to be able to, to make those calls.
And it, it'll take us all and everybody in this room to get that going, and take us all helping each other and doing it as a, as a team of taxpayers to do that.
So if that just applies to your dog, will pet owner?
That's where reinforcements of the law and ordinancees will move. That's-
If it goes for one, it goes for all. We can't just make certain people do certain things.
How is that fair if I'm responsible pet owner and my pets don't get out? What are you telling me?
That's where the courts would come in and take care of that.
But if someone's telling me that I have to pay out so much money because one of my animals isn't spayed or neutered, when I could be spending my money on my animal?
It's if your dog gets out.
That's what I was saying.
If it's out here causing trouble.
Yeah, that's what I was asking you to do, to respond to pet owners.
I don't think we expect an officer to go to, from house to house to house to house.
No.
But what we expect that officer to do, or, or is equip him with what he needs. And when he goes out to, like, a hoarding situation, uh, you know, somebody with twenty dogs, or, or something else is going on. Then he has, he has an ordinance or a law that he can rely on. He can't just say, "Well, I'm gonna do this, or I'm gonna do that", but he says, "Hey, we have this law, we have this one". It just kinda gets him a leg to stand on.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. Is it just-
It's not, nobody, I don't think it's gonna be going from door to- Yeah, it will be for everybody, but it's kinda like-
It's across the board. I mean, we, you put in an ordinance, it's, it's for the entire county and city.
If nobody claims the dog, you hold it for so long, you put it out to the groups for adoption, and we have to make those hard calls.
Okay.
That's just, and if somebody does own the animal, then-
Make sure my baby stays in the house.
Well, again.
Well, your spay-neuter?
My thing male is, yes. My male is mine. He stays in the house, and when he goes outside, he is on leash, he is tagged, he is non-researched, um, he can read for bug. And, and he has, you know, it's two.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
And he's outside.
We appreciate everyone being here tonight. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, all, we're charged.